Call the meeting to order, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Maybe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
All right. Roxanne Brown.
Here.
Here, here.
Yes.
Tom Hilker, Aston, Dylan Polly.
Here.
Norm Foley.
Here.
Donna Center.
Here.
Michelle Wood.
Here. Thank you. Public participation rules. Please wait for the chair to acknowledge you before you speak. Begin by stating your name and address. Give us your comments, opinions, or questions on the issue being discussed. To ensure that everyone has time to speak and that we can address other items on the agenda, we may limit an individual's speaking time to five minutes. If time permits, we may allow you one additional time period to provide new information. Please be respectful of the planning commission, the applicant, and your neighbors. Thank you for attending. Nathan and Kevin.
And Denise.
And Denise. Oh, yeah, she's online. There we are. Um, we have an introduction of a new member. Welcome, Roxanne.
Thank you, thank you.
How are you?
I'm doing good.
Good, good. Thank you. Um, thanks for joining our little commission here. We're gonna break some rules today. No, I'm just kidding. Um, we're not gonna break any rules, but we might break time limit. Uh, we might like may break a time rule.
Are you done yet?
Yeah, almost, almost. I'm trying to go fast.
Yeah.
Um, adoption of the agenda. There was several agenda disruptions, if you will. Um, but I believe that we are good. Does anyone have anything to add to the agenda?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, great. Um, approval of minutes from the September ninth, twenty twenty four meeting.
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Support.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Dylan. Any discussion? Is that a vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I. Any opposed? Run. Um, so no public comment at this time. Um, so we'll move on from that one. There is a report for correspondence, report number P dash zero six dash two four from Mr. Duel.
I make a motion to receive and file our correspondence.
Uh, motion by Dylan, seconded by John. Is there any other discussion on the correspondence filing? Hearing none. Um, oh, is it a voice, voice vote? Okay, good to know. I'm gonna need notes. Um. Perfect. Good to know. Okay. Roll call. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. Now regarding the public hearing, um. There's no need to open the public hearing? Go ahead.
Uh, no, there is no need to open the public hearing. It would be my recommendation at this point in time that the planning commission give consideration to postponing, uh, the agenda, uh, this case, uh, until the January meeting when they conclude their schematic and drawing, uh. Because part of the thing, and I'll clarify part of the the position as as formerly mentioned by, um, Ms. Douse, is that the area of confusion really falls in waterfront residential is when you are a platted subdivision versus a non-platted. Or if it's a small enough lot on Rung Lake where you actually have ordinary high watermark that dictates the waterfront parcel line. Uh, in this last case, the the issue therein which which added confusion with Mr. Duel is that as a planted sub, it defeated the order ordinary high watermark. Um, it is actually defined rear lot parcel line. So our setbacks is it as I believe what are the sections, it's subsection A and B in in the, uh, in the zoning mechanism. So the point of clarification falls into subsection A and B of twenty-five foot setback from the property line or twenty-five foot setback from ordinary high watermark. The property line, if present, supersedes ordinary high watermark. And so henceforth, the ninety-three or whatever egregious feat that was represented in the schematic that did not have scale um, is going to be clarified, uh, for the January meeting. Um, but that is something to be noted, um, moving forward because uh, we do have small segments of waterfront residential properties and parcels, uh, that are in platted subdivisions, uh, twenty-three South, Long Lake. Um, obviously, on this case, in in El Cajon, that are in platted subs that would meet the definition of having a parcel line on the water side where some of them are all the way to ordinary high watermark for setback. So just something to be cognizant of, um, because unfortunately, that's the way it has to be broken out because there isn't one shoe that fits both feet. Um, so to be noted, uh, that was the point of confusion, uh, that is being clarified. Uh, the applicants are been more than helpful, uh, through this entire process, more than forthcoming and are willing to, uh, take their time and bring this case back out of postponement at the January meeting with a schematic that is actually in scale, which is a prerequisite of the application to begin.
Point of clarity.
Yes.
Um, the ordinary water line, uh, I guess, how is that determined?
Ordinary high watermark is determined by data set points set forth by FEMA, um, for insurance purposes primarily. Uh, and really, the best way to ascertain ordinary high watermark on any given parcel is by a licensed surveyor that can correlate that exact GPS coordinate with the datum points, uh, set forth by FEMA. It is not set forth by an Eagle, uh, individual, uh, that is doing a wetland delineation and made a broad, uh, observation and statement to the applicant that, uh, this potential project is not within the ordinary high watermark line.
So, and but this potential project, the the concern with it is basically clarifying our setbacks.
That was the point of clarification. The applicant now knows, uh, that clarification. And because of the the time constraints and his inability to, uh, have that corrected for this meeting and his inability to attend, uh, as appropriate as he would like to attend, his, uh, request, uh, by email was to postpone this until the January meeting.
Thank you.
I make a motion to postpone this case until the next meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
I'll third.
But it does look like wherever the pad is that he has set out there, it looked like it's if it's the property line, because John and I went out there last Friday.
Yeah, uh, and and the 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 opportunity, he it is not our burden, uh, to meet. He actually has to show, um, by the scale drawing that he meets the standard of a twenty-five foot setback on waterfront side. Um, it, I mean, the 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 error in his schematic was that the scale didn't meet to the side backs, because I measured it out even by his own creation and none of it correlated with any of it.
With the.
So.
So he was just drawing a stick figure in a on a picture.
Yeah, I think he subcontracted my eldest, um, which I was quite proud because they were pretty straight.
Pretty, they had pretty grass and sun in the corner. Um, we don't need to open, we don't need to open or close, right? Okay, cool. Thanks. Yep, roll call vote, please.
The motion is made by Dylan Paul and informed by Larry Gary to table a, um, social use application for case number three dash zero six dash two four until November thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Um, Roxanne.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Nora.
Yes.
Doug.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Okay. Denise, are you still there or did you sign off for the night? Oh, okay, there you are.
I'm here.
What you got for us on the master plan?
Okay, so I guess first I have a question probably for Nathan. So do you actually have a, um, contract now with Eagle for your grant?
Uh, I believe the last emails that I got that, uh, clarified, uh, and I believe I'd have to see if Michelle has it on her desk, but I believe that we were green light, move forward.
All right. So after the long wait, while the federal government got their stuff straightened out, so we finally can now put ours on the project. Um, then I guess my next question is you applied for the MISTHA grant, and did you get that?
Yes, we did. So we received sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars in grants for our master plan.
Okay, so then I'm just gonna keep asking questions, okay? So, um, you know, we started whatever it was a year ago before we realized there was a mix up with the federal funding. Um, and we went ahead and really all we did was your survey. You know, we had that survey out there, got almost three hundred responses, which was really good. So now I'm gonna back up because now we're a year, a year later. And, um, I guess I don't remember if this is something that this this planning commission has talked about, but um, you know, I've 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 been contacted by the other communities in Alpena County that wanna do get together and, you know, do the joint master plan like they did last time. I don't think Alpena Township was part of that um, during that project. So I'm bringing it up because now that we're a year down the road and we've had to pause years, you're gonna kind of be on the same schedule as the other communities. So I mean, I guess I'm asking maybe if you guys wanna discuss if you wanna be part of that joint master planning process.
What's the benefit? What's the, I guess I know what the benefit is, but what's the burden of doing it jointly?
Um, I think I don't know that there's a that there's really a burden other than um, you know, we need to have kind of like what we did with the recreation plan. We need to have some joint meetings, obviously. So there's, I mean, there's a little extra, I guess, there because it's it's not like you lose anything. I mean, you still have all of the same information in the master plan. You still have all of the same, you know, whatever goals and objectives that that you want. Um, I think the benefit, you know, is is more of a whole, right? Everybody's sort of on the same page and planning together. Um, I don't know. I guess I'm fine either way. So I'm guess I'm, I just threw that out because I know you know, that if at least a few of the other communities have brought it up, when are we gonna start that? Because it's you know, there's this coming up on expiring. Um. So before I get too far down the road with doing yours, I just wanna find out, I just kind of gauging whether or not that's something you wanna participate in or you wanna just go on your own.
I guess my question is, is is timing the only reason why we'd never participated in it prior to this?
I don't remember.
Strictly based on timing?
Well, I I think that was a big, that was why we
Yeah.
Uh, a three-year, uh, principal gap in in joining on the rec plan. Um, and so now that timing mechanism is aligned. I guess my question, uh, back to you, Ms. Klein, is that are any of the other townships involved, which townships are involved? And then also have any of the other townships uh, been successful with the coastal resiliency grant and or, uh, the MISTHA grant for the housing?
Yep, so, um. So I'll just, I'll I'll tell you the ones. So Green Township definitely involved. They're the ones that brought it up. They're the ones that are kind of leading like, hey, let's get this thing done. So they do not have a grant. Um, Maple Ridge Township, which did not, has never participated in that. They, I talked to them, um, initially, this was probably, I think it was the summer. They did receive a MISTHA grant, so they're gonna be doing their master plan anyway. Now, I haven't, since I sat there at their meeting this summer, I haven't been back there, so um, I told them about the process and the possibility of participating in the joint plan. I don't have a final answer from them yet because, again, they they've been focusing on, like you were, getting the application in, you know, getting all the MISTHA ducks in a row. Um, Wilson Township, Osanique Township, we're both part of it. I'm trying to remember if Sandborne was or not. And that one I'm losing, um, that one's gone out of my head, but I'm going there next week, so I'm gonna be talking to them anyways in person. Um, so I had some interest in the city of Alpena uh, in participating this time. Now, I don't know, that doesn't necessarily mean that they will, but at least there was some, hey, maybe we should do that being talked about. So it's possible. And of course, Alpena County is, you know, that's that obviously they're they're, they were interested in doing that again. So there's interest. I just don't have other than Green Township saying yes, you know, I don't have, I don't have any final answers. Um, the only one obviously that got the coastal grant is you guys. City of Alpena did not apply for one and Sandborne did not apply. But so we got two MISTHA grants. Um, really, that's all you need. You know, to get that thing, to get the whole county done with all of the townships and the city. So.
I I guess I leave it to this. I, the the pros and cons from my point of view with the ma- the rec plan was that the good, the bad, and the ugly is it it's one one offering, which is a a good linear approach. But you lose some of the the nuance and and the dedication and the site-specific things that make us a little bit unique than some of our other neighboring communities. So six of one, half a dozen of another. Um, it's just, we now actually have a couple of funding mechanisms afforded that potentially the majority of the other communities don't. So should we take this opportunity? Because either way, we slice it as a community. Uh, we're gonna be on the same timing mechanism. So once we shore up two potentially new chapters, one coastal resiliency and then the housing chapter that would be included in our master plan and and really reinforcing the housing, uh, plan that came out earlier this past year. Um, we'll be on that same five-year cycle for the next go-round, so.
Well, and I guess, you know, the the layperson doesn't know the difference between where the township ends and the city begins and the, you know, like, I look at it like this. If 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 we're gonna get along with our neighbors, why wouldn't we have a plan that's a cooperative plan? And I don't know if this is legal or if this is allowable, but if we're putting in the cash because we got the money for it, couldn't we do that drawout, like you said about the rec plan where we highlight certain things that are unique to Alpena Township as opposed to Wilson Township?
Well, and part of the reality of the thing that this commission's gonna need to face is that I'm not gonna be here. And so who is gonna be the voice? Because, uh, there were two very loud voices through the rec plan that overshadowed some of the other communities. And that's my fear, is that the louder voice is gonna get the most notable changes in documentation, and I don't want it to come, it is what it is. Um, but you'd have to have a dedicated representatives that are aligned and make sure that all those meetings are attended and that we don't sit back, because if our voice isn't heard, then it's not noted in a master plan. So like I said, six of one, half a dozen of another, but I can say that I won't be at those meetings, so. I I I guess food for thought, as Ms. Klein said, uh, she's gonna be shoring up some of those commitments.
It's a five-year plan?
It's, yeah, every five years that you should be doing your your rec plan and your master. So you you have that ability as a commission to to make that out, recommendation to the board of trustees, um, either to go individually or go in as a whole. Um, I guess, what does it look like, especially given the the grant consideration? Um, because if it it's a unified master plan, how would we utilize those funds to the best of the townships' inherent qualities and abilities?
Well, that's a good question. You know, you got actually more money than really is needed. I mean, you actually could update your zoning ordinance if you needed to at the same time.
That's, I was hoping that you were gonna say that because there are, uh, a high level of amendments that would need to take place in our zoning ordinance.
Yep. I mean, that's part of what you probably put in the application anyways. Look at zone.
No, to to do it on our own, because then we would actually have the ability to to use those excess funds.
Okay, so the the question becomes, do we wanna do all the work ourselves because we can afford it? Or do we wanna work cooperatively and kind of put the tab and make it make sense for everybody?
Everybody.
You could actually do both of those things. I mean, you could do the cooperative part of the mass, you could do the master plan cooperatively and still have enough money left over to do to do update your zoning. I mean, you, it's a, it's a lot of money that you just received, so.
Coastal grant?
Uh, eleven-five or twelve-five on the coastal and
and sixty-two-five.
I think it was sixty-two-five total between the two.
Yeah. Yeah, and you know, it's not like we're doing a full you know, like for those, for those of you that were there last time, we went through the zoning, it's it's not like that. I mean, it's you're not completely ripping apart your entire zoning ordinance and re, you know, redoing every section. I don't think, at least. So, but you have a lot that you wanna change. So, but it's not where I'm there in your face, you know, for nine meetings, going over every line. Um, it's a little, it's a little different than that. So.
We have a, we have a strong baseline now where what she's referencing is, oh, we we can't, we've come a long way, so.
I look at it like this. I think we need to just I I've said it four hundred times today, stop kicking the can down the road and just pull the trigger and make a decision one way or another. From from the board of trustees, the board's perspective, Nora, any thoughts, any conversation, any consideration that this commission should take into account?
So at this time, uh, bring something that we can take to the board and and let the board look at it.
Okay.
And get a reason why they should look at it, whatever way you're thinking of it.
Yeah, cuz it it, and trust me, I mean, that's the reason that several years ago, uh, I I made the recommendation to the board of trustees to to break our cycle three years early and at great expense to align. Um, it just seemed like certain things got a little bit skewed when everybody's coming together because he had various townships at various comprehension levels. Um, and and rightfully so.
We're all faced, that's what we're faced with right now. I think as a, as this this commission sits.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at it going, why wouldn't we? Like, sign the check, let's just do this and move on and start making plans to get this going, because to me, it makes sense.
Yeah, I just, I was, I was happy to hear that the the excess funds can be utilized for the the ordinance updates because
We'll need that.
Yeah.
That would be a direct result of the master plan update.
Yes, they are, they go.
Trying to understand that.
Yep. Master plan is what's gonna drive our township.
And and because of that, we'll need to update our zonings.
Correct.
You got it.
And it can be done really at the same time. You already know what you wanna update in zoning.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll send you my my litany of
When are you done?
November twentieth.
Oh, sweet.
Henceforth, my concern of who's gonna be the voice? So that that's, I guess that's my, that's my largest is because Denise and I in this commission worked, uh, very diligently through the the last process. Um, I will do everything, Denise, to, uh, get you my, uh, all of my highlighted areas through ordinance one forty-two.
Okay.
Um, because outside of that, and that's my, I guess that's my only concern with looking at the big picture, which I I'm all for. But is, is this the right five-year cycle to hop on board with everybody else when we're, I don't know who's gonna be the the principal representative? Because as we all know and sat through some of those meetings, it was great. But there were certain people that talked to the point where there was only one direction. And I don't know if this commission had the opportunity to fully vest themselves in that process. So that's my only concern. So, six of one.
Although I'm new to this. Please. Commission part. Share your thoughts. I'm very loud and I really don't care. So that's the way I rule. Yeah. Um, I was a supervisor for Caladonia. I was also a treasurer for Millen Township. I kind of get the drift of all of this. I I wouldn't mind if if that's the way we go. So with your experience, would a joint plan be the 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 right thing to do if we have our voice heard? Probably, but like he said, we're not gonna let them walk all over us. No. We're gonna, you know, introduce what we want. I also feel like there's a lot of new leadership amongst these townships as well. Where Probably good. Which is probably a good thing, where I think there's equitable time for our voices to be heard and our concerns to be shared and our updates to be made. But again, I think we just, we we need to pull the trigger on it and just decide, so.
Yeah, and I think Denise would appreciate knowing.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, for sure.
So I would like, I I guess, long and short, you can continue to have that discussion amongst yourselves, but I would make a recommendation to the board of trustees by November twentieth of that meeting, which direction we want to go, uh, to move forward with a joint. Which therein, I'm all for. I just wanna make sure that this commission knows.
We've gotta make sure our voices are heard.
Yeah.
Our voice matters. Yep.
That means we need to make a decision tonight.
Is this a motion? Okay. So you wanna make a motion? Anybody have a thought?
Didn't know.
Or anybody have more discussion or concern?
Where where is, where's this group heading for? For, what do you, do it on our own or go with the group?
I'm leaning agree with the group.
Group. I would say.
To me, it makes sense.
Or do.
And we got a voice.
And you, Nora?
And me.
And you?
Yeah, I'm okay with going with group. I just, I was hearing a little bit of
I think we've got, we've got one voice that, you know, thankfully is there and I I also pretty loud. Good.
That's good.
But I am also very, I'm I'm so green to this kind of stuff.
Oh, so am I.
Gee, you're. It's from my education standpoint, I would need a a little bit more backing, which I'm now knowing our drop dead date for our current supervisor, I would need support of the trustees to help me understand. I mean, that's just really what it is more than anything is, or Denise, I mean, I guess, we've got, we've got her, I mean, but I don't see it, if if we can do a master plan update and then that equals changes to the zoning ordinance, which then it it just, to me, it makes sense. So.
We just have, the voice is wonderful, but the voice has gotta have knowledge.
Correct, that's just it. That's just it. I gotta have the knowledge. I'm more than happy.
Somebody giving you the knowledge.
Get get on the soapbox.
This question, but it's not like I'm leaving town, I'm I'm here to change it urgently. So I mean.
Cheat, cheat. Yeah.
I'd make myself.
Great, thank you.
So, make that motion.
So I make a motion to have a joint committee.
A joint master plan.
Master plan.
With neighboring townships. Is that how we went over it?
Yeah, cuz you don't know exactly which.
Well, you don't know which ones it is. Yeah.
Right.
I support that motion that I just helped write. Look at us. And presented to the board at the November twenty-fifth meeting.
Yeah.
Our intention.
Okay, so what you wanna do is you wanna make a recommendation to the board. Okay, so like Dylan Paul, I made a motion, make a recommendation to the board of trustees to have a joint master plan with neighboring communities, supported by Michelle Wood. Okay.
Beautiful.
So we will do a roll call. Um, Roxanne.
Yes.
And Larry.
Yes.
And Dylan.
Yes.
Nora.
Yes.
Doug.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Um, now on to short-term rentals. Is this gonna be part of the master plan?
Well, let's talk about short-term rentals. I think you guys will have your, all do your decisions made before the master plan, but, um. Where did you leave it at the last meeting? I think Nico was there or somebody else was there.
Right.
I I left with no information on it. You you guys know that he was really prepared for it.
Okay, so, um, have you guys looked over, I think, boy, I think that was in the summer? That first meeting where I had sent just a very you know, I didn't send an ordinance, right? I just sent a draft.
Uh huh.
Right.
You had that in front of you?
I, not in front of me, but no, but.
Okay. Um, so one of the things that attorneys are recommending for short-term rentals, and your attorney is one of them, is that you split up you split up your short-term rental regulations between the zoning and a standalone ordinance. Um, what they wanna see is you, they want you to list short-term rentals in your zoning ordinance in terms of listing where it's allowed. And then all of the regulations that apply would be in a standalone ordinance that is not within your zoning. So that's what your attorney would like to see. Um, so that's what I would definitely recommend.
So which one survives? Like, what's the difference between having it written in and then having a standalone?
Well, you're you're writing it in, you're just writing it into your use table that's in your ordinance to say, you know, here's the district allowed in. The only reason to do that is because it is a land use, you know, it's a, it's a land use, just like a bed and breakfast is. Um, so it needs to be in there to make it not confusing. And then in the zoning, we reference this standalone ordinance. And I think the reason for having it standalone is that, um, nobody's grandfathered. Right? So zoning has a little bit of a grandfathering issue if it's already happening before it gets put in your zoning ordinance. It's it's a non-conforming use if it if it just happens to be happening in those districts. Um. So.
And if I may, I think what may be best for that portion of the conversation is I could ask, uh, Tim Gold, township attorney, to actually be jointly present for the December discussion to where that could expound that conversation of um, the standalone ordinance. Um, the standalone ordinance versus, that way it's, you you have an ordinance, and if there's a potential for uh. Corrective action or, and if sometimes there's a fee schedule associated with it, not saying that it would go that path. It would be standalone, so anytime you make any changes to that, you don't, you're not redoing your entire zoning ordinance. That's principally why you list it in the the uses. Um. But I guess that's a, it's a beautiful seed to really start the conversation is. Which zones, obviously. Everybody that wants it is to use it and.
No waterfront.
But it's that, that's the only place people want is waterfront, is waterfront, so. But uh.
All right.
Then could you actually make Denise? Make, pin her, yeah, that way she's.